And so, you know, it's, it's very important to him to support our military and the concerns that they have. And when we first heard that there was, you know, those type of concerns from others in the community, we were glad that Josh already took steps to make sure that this is not being seen from anyone that it could. So, that is our heart. We really do want your blessing and your community. I appreciate my son's uprightness in presenting everything. I realize that there is a lot of information with this that he didn't actually technically have to share, but he did that because he wants to be upfront, upright, and full of integrity. And we did not want anything to come up later that would, you know, to look like there wasn't any integrity in this. So, um, I really appreciate it.
All right. Anyone else who'd like to speak in the positive? Please, let's try to stay on task as far as what we're talking about, the variances and whatnot.
My name is Daniel McCollum, twenty-three oh nine Hightown, Rockland, Rockland, also. I'm on Josh since two thousand nine, and actually, um, stayed with us, my family, quite a bit, amongst his sons. Uh, I've been doing paintball, which is a similar sport, uh, since nineteen eighty-two. And been to a lot of paintball courts, raised, uh, my siblings, uh, sons is here, paintball. And, um, you know, we, we went and played these sports on multiple, you know, places. And every time you see these things, one of the big things that they're doing with is saving them. And that's the type of person Josh is, is concerned with saving. When we're looking at these variances, and, you know, he's trying to go above and beyond on all types of things that y'all were already requiring, and they just, the variances that he's asking for are, you know, uh, that he's asking for, so gracious for, is, you know, to help to establish this and to keep the community that's connected to it, you know, and protect their property value and everything that he can. Uh, Josh says he's working towards this, uh, he's, he's trying to protect the same place he is. Uh, I'll share this, we just walked past a deer hunt, and where he deer hunts, he doesn't allow you to go out and just shoot anything. He, he goes above and beyond to take that area, even though he doesn't, he might not shoot the deer he's looking for, but he protects that area. That's the same thing he's trying to do, just to save any other variances and make sure that, that the community preserves them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Is there anyone here in opposition who'd like to come forward? Please have one person, and we'll go from there.
I have a bill, thirty-four seventy-three D Farmers Way, property, approximately about a half mile, to those parents' zoning property. First, there's a lot said that has nothing to do with variances. I just want to point that out, and how people feel about this gentleman, and I don't know this gentleman personally, so everything that I will be speaking to will be directly related to variances. Review the criteria of granting variance. You guys provided this up, up front for us. Number five spoke the most to me. Graving of the variance will not impair or hinder the property or improvements in the neighborhood or subject properties. This will absolutely cause property values to decline, being so close to our property. Specifically, the variance requesting that requires them to build additional fence lines needs to remain in place. There should not be a variance that would allow them to go putting that up, because our properties do butt directly up to that property. My property in particular can actually see that home from my backyard. So, the information he's provided to you about not being able to see any of the homes through the wooded area is not true. There, this is a chain link fence. Not the entire stretch of our homes all have privacy fences. So, using the existing fence lines and tree lines is not sufficient enough to protect our neighborhood from what they're proposing putting in place. This is only one home. There are multiple homes with either chain link fence in the back or no fence at all along that, along that property line. As far as trees, most of those are deciduous trees, and they also leave in the fall. In the fall, I have clear view throughout the entire property as well as my age. So, as soon as, as soon as the weather changes, the thick green lush trees that you see up there disappear. There's nothing there to protect us from the lights, from the noise. A lot of, a lot of things spoken about noise regarding the actual weapons themselves. I'm not so concerned about that when it comes to the noise. I'm concerned about fifty vehicles and up to a hundred, hundred and fifty people directly behind my home, dressed in military ears, carrying military weapons, style weapons. I don't know if any of you have actually seen what these weapons look like. I did provide this prior to this meeting. These are what potential crowds and what these individuals look like as they are playing those games. There's been a lot said about it being mostly children. Everything that I've seen are eighteen and older, up to in their forties. These are all males. These will be people that will be only guarded by a net and a hundred and fifty-foot barrier and by rickety little wooden privacy masks. While I'm not home, while my wife is at home alone, while my daughters are at home, a net just simply isn't enough protection. Yes, they can't take the stakes out of the ground, but a net can be cut with a knife. This is, these are fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty-year-olds out here. A net isn't, isn't going to be enough barrier to protect us from, from what could potentially be hundreds of strangers that don't even reside in Todd Hospital. The other piece of it is that this area has continued to be rezoned into residential neighborhoods. Just show hands, how many people are here from Crestwood, uh, how many people are here from Knightsville, um, even Bemis Road?
Bemis Knights Academy Road.
All these people surround this property.
Please keep in mind, as it currently is, if we deny every one of these, he still can do it, he's just got to meet these.
I understand.
But, you know, it, it is not a case of we're gonna stop him from doing.
Correct. However, if you do provide him those variances, it's not much easier for him to do it, and it competes on our ability to, to have our peaceful, quiet community that we invest in. None of us, he mentioned one, one neighbor. I'm not sure what his relationship with that neighbor is. However, every other single neighbor in our neighborhood has pretty much been against this. Only recently, within the last two days, did other neighborhoods find out about this in the area and decided they'd work against this. So, there are more than, there are people here from multiple communities in the area here to recognize us.
Okay, I'm only interrupt you just for a second for you and for everybody that's here. From the board's standpoint, your opinion matters, but the further away you are from it, if you are not upbutting it, then the damage potentially to your values or other such, or the fact that you might hear or see something, if you're not upbutting it, it doesn't carry as much weight as those that are close. And we, this board takes it very seriously to try to protect everything we can. And that's why, I'm gonna say it again, he can do what he wants in there as long as he means. If, if this board denies everything he's asking for, that doesn't stop him from doing it, it just means he's got to scale it back a little bit, he can still do it.
We are ready to prepare for next week's meetings along from the live sound and work. But as far as the variances are concerned, we do feel the granting of this variance will impair our neighborhood. It will impair all of these things adjacent to our property. Simply anybody who lives along that property line, uh, and we're gonna substantially increase congestion in the neighborhood. The boards aren't built for potentially fifty to a hundred, hundred and fifty people every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday driving through our neighborhoods. I mean, you're gonna endanger all, all of the kids in, in the area trying to traverse to get to this facility.
There are downsides to it, yes, sir.
I'll let someone else.
Hey, my name is Laura Keppler, uh, thirty-four ninety-seven Farmers Way, uh, Los Angeles, directly in the central. And, um, about the tree line, it does have mini gaps, and it is in several places. You can see through with, with the leaves on. And then, like he said, uh, we're worried also about the lights lowering back of our homes. Uh, without increased buffer, without better fence, my fence is going to be the only thing that can get damaged. What if my fence falls down, it's on my, my responsibility to build it up or build it higher to combat him when he's coming in. I'd like to see, it shall be the responsibility of the applicant seeking relief to assert the burden of proof and rebuttal presumption by presenting sufficient facts and evidence to explain how the proposed appeal or variance is consistent with the general spirit and intent of the LDA comprehensive plan. I do not believe that our neighborhood property values will stay the same. We see turnover like this because we are elderly, military, and we rely on our houses that's smashed up so when we leave, it's not vacant, or property stays in good repair and the values stay up. I would not have bought my house, and I, and I can guarantee everyone on Farmers Way signing their petition, they would not have bought their house with a property with a business like that behind it. It needs every variance in there to stay, to give us some fighting chance to sell our homes. I bought my home before it was on the market. I told the realtor, when there's somebody that asks you they want to sell their house, it's a safe, cute, small community within ten inch range of the base. They turn over. If you won't see the turnover, the sit, the property values will go down, and it will affect the entire neighborhood. And, um, number seven, the requested variance will, will not be inconsistent with the general spirit and intent. We have Freedom Park, there's a Miracle Park there. I have a child who has special needs that is not going to help me sell a home. It is not going to help my family live in peace and tranquility. I bought the house, and I find it offensive that someone can afterward come in and disrupt my harmony and my peace and my presence. Thank you.
I live on thirty-three twenty-eight here, Magic Avenue. That's right in front of the road right there. I've lived here for almost seven years. The seven years I've fought was these, that went down in the hole in front of my house with just no traffic, but no vision of anything. Especially at Walmart's time there, it seemed worse. Now, I've got four kids, all grown up, and grandkids. Now, if you're asking me, but shall we pull up in my driveway, lift me in my yard, I'm just saying, better. So, yeah, they say veterans, y'all are some who experience different things in life. So, come back and say you can come for one by staying, but if you wouldn't do what somebody else would do, you can't. I'm sorry. It took me a long time to find that place because it is a R.A. zone. I can enlarge my family in my life. Now, you're telling me I can't because I sit out with my people coming in now, put it in my driveway and tell me I'm going to look at them and get in my driveway because I don't want? So, that's it. So, leave a question to everybody.
Sorry, can I have your name for the record please?
Daniel Fugma. So, leave a question to everybody.
My name is Eric Grouse. I live at thirty-four seventy Venus Bank Academy Road. My property is the entire road frontage, uh, of Venus Bank Academy Road, the entire distance of this property, uh, in question, and on my mother's property run across the subject property all down the southern boundary of that property. Yes, I did have a conversation with Mr. President. I wanted a description of what he was doing on the property. He was a very nice gentleman. It was a very polite conversation. I never said that it would not affect values in the area, just so you know. Okay? Now, I know it's more familiar with that property than I am. That is a family farm, a whole lot. I've been on that property everywhere. You can see blue those trees with some depth back in that property. I mean, it's just, you can't. Also, the home where, where his, uh, parents will live and brothers and cousins is visible completely from the front of the road. If there is a pro shop in front of that house, it is completely visible as well as the parking lot from the road. Your conversation about the netting running all the way to the edge of the pro shop across the front of the property would extend the netting all out from the wood lines into open field area. There is a pond right there as well, but it is not wood. I believe that the, the boundary, the buffer zone, should at least be the minimum across the front of that road to simply, uh, distort from the vision of the, uh, uh, usage of that property as well as the, uh, storage pods that will be placed in there and any other obstacles that, that might be placed in there in order to play the games. Also, I would like to have the boundary on the southern side along that creek line be a memo of what it should be for the sanitary reasons, as we own that property, it affects that, uh, grizzly. That's what I have to say in the, uh, vision of the variances.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Anything, there's thirty-four sixty-one Farmers Way, I've covered it up in, in, uh, my house, it's part of that change. You asked a couple of questions earlier about how far you can shoot. Couple of months, you can go three hundred and seventy-five feet. So, a hundred and fifty foot buffer is quite enough. Good of a buffer to talk. And they can also shoot around twenty rounds a second, so it's a lot of plastic. He said, my degradable pellets, well, they can take a week up to a year to dispose, um, depending upon being natural, it's, uh, so rain, sunshine, hopefully, that'd be, so. Talking about six houses, so that's one point four million dollars worth of property value if they were played right now. Two point eight is the whole, the whole line there. I would not walk my house. I don't know what's, you know, that a military team hears. I have, there's actually neighbors here that have other kids playing my back door. They like to play on crammeling. A gun that can shoot three hundred and seventy-five feet, and I have a hundred and fifty foot buffer. That not doesn't have too safety to me. He mentioned sixty people science petition, all right, but I'm not kidding. Part in the spot, all the time. Which means that this business could potentially be bigger than what he thinks it is, which increases even more traffic through this area, which once again goes back to that number five. Property values and congestion along with safety, I, I don't see how we can grant their increases. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Charles Wright. I live in twenty-six thirty-two, yes, ready. I'm against all of the varic, variances, kind of, settlers of this guy. We need all the protection that we can have in that place. Whoever was intended to that farm and the paintball of shooting accident there, and they talked about varic, it's only hiding the stuff, solar, we don't have solar power at night. So, it's gonna have to run some electrical lines, and like trucks tow, uh, the buffer are not bringing up. Y'all are already allowing the variances before we even give you.
No, sir. Nothing has been allowed yet. Now, let's, let's get, get all this straight. He is asking for variances. Nothing has been granted. Nothing has been done.
Okay, but you said, he already has a right, couldn't miss it.
If he meets every one of these, if we deny every one of these variances, he can still do what he wants to do. He's got to do it within those confines.
Okay, I want the buffer, the buffer not, it shouldn't be more than that. Now, I said three hundred feet. If you look on the internet, there are deaths associated with paintball shooting, there's deaths associated with anytime you shoot in, having United States, there's deaths involved. Uh, paintball people, they, 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 they look like SWAT teams. You see that?
Yes, sir. And please, let's, let's get back to on task. What you're.
Okay, but you left it talking about everything. They didn't want to talk about it.
What you're bringing to us, other people have brought the same information to us, what I had.
Did you tell you about the deaths?
Proceeding, sir.
I mean, put the same procedure on everybody.
We are trying to, to deal with everybody that we can.
Landscapes, you talk about landscapes, you talk about trees. Trees, if they're oak tree, this pollute, it will be one forty-foot pollute. What's it got to have there? Are you gonna count every little tree that grows in there?
There are specifications in the landscape ordinance that tell you what size the trees have to be to be counted.
Okay, detain the still-in-ill for hair, does anybody matter to see? If he, you have, have a gun, you can shoot in here so we can hear it?
I would not have allowed that to happen.
But you allow it out there.
Again, again.
My, my wife and I have thirty-seven acres of, yes, ready, front of it. I have a perfect, preservative right, and I have, in years past, because all that property were, uh, Crestwood and everything, it was in my family's, my wife's family, they developed all that. And I hunted all in there, and I have a perfectly right to get out there and hunt them in my backyard. But I don't because I know that anywhere I shoot out there now, there's a house. And I had quit hunting out there probably five or six years ago, longer than that. And we talked about the park. If he fills up the park, well, where the people will park, will decide to lose? I park, I park the paper, my wife and I parked Sunday to take a sign of the, to take a picture of the sign. And I couldn't, we all, those are dicks right there. Now, how you gonna go around this?
Here, here again, sir. If we deny, as a board, every one of these variances, he's got to put in their parking, which means he's not gonna have the room.
He's already with it, the variances will cost him money.
And that's his decision if he doesn't get the variance because he's paying the money.
But I say make it as far over as possible.
That's not what this board is here to do, to try to make it hard on anybody. We are here to look at the source.
That's my, that's my, that's my, that's my, I know, I know it's been a long time.
And we, we listen as the board, and we try to take a look at every opinion, everything that's out there, in every decision that we make.
I've been out there since nineteen seventy-four, and lucky houses out, there wasn't nothing happening in the dirt, buddy. And there wouldn't be a guest, buddy, there wouldn't be one that goes straight through. And my wife and I had to get the park to the county, couldn't run it through there. And now, I got grandkids and all this stuff. I got, I got to worry about. I have enough to worry about now either, because the traffic on guest boat has gotten so, so bad that if you add this out there, or another subdivision, which is likely to, that's what I call the world, is another subdivision. But I'm totally against any variances.
I'm thinking. Yes, ma'am?
May I have Francis, what are you bringing on to someone's bar? Three things, one is, my kids are smaller, they used to sneak off and go in those woods and run around and get some kind of little pond or something back there that they want to go. And now, this man's telling us, he's gonna resurrect these. At first, he heard him saying he's gonna be all the way around, starting from that pro shop. But then I heard him say something about, that the barriers on the end weren't gonna be able, they say weren't gonna be in the areas that were, would it? Well, wood didn't stop my kids from standing up and going into those woods. But fence might have stopped them, but wood didn't stop them. And if they accident, this thing, this barrier isn't there. You are taking a chance. Some child, someone can wander back there and get hit by something. That's what you're taking chances. You also said, is there anybody that came down to, they can go back there and re-earner every once in a while and check that this barrier is up there and it's, it's well done? Are you guys gonna do it? I don't think so.
It's, it's complaint generated. It's just the nature of.
So, I'm gonna have to wander off into his pocket and check if it's up there or not?
If you have a problem.
I want you to think about this before you make your various decision. That's what I mean.
We will think about it, but keep in mind, Lount County does not have inspectors that they pay to go out periodically and inspect, inspect all of this stuff.
This isn't stuff, this isn't a neighborhood, this is a thing coming up into a neighborhood. This is something that doesn't really belong there. And what belongs there is, it's agricultural and neighborhood. Agriculture is in farms and things like that, and I understand that. It is not agricultural.
Keep in mind, we're, we're dealing with variances.
Right, so the variances, he has to put up a fence, and all the way around, and only do his stuff if we have to do that.
If, if this board votes to deny each and every variance.
On the definition of variance, I'm saying deny the one about the fence. I don't care. I want that fence. I want the children not to be able to sneak in the bed and go in there. And I was assured and said, is that pressing, is it permanent across all the areas? Is that permanently up? I heard him say, they're gonna put it up during the times that it's there, and then they put it up and take it down. I mean, is it permanent or is it temporary? And I didn't hear you ask that question.
That's the netting, not the fence.
Right, is the netting permanent or is it temporary?
Once they put it there, it's there.
Okay, so it's permanent, huh?
Until they take it down for maintenance or other issues.
So, the fence is separate?
I may have created that. When I asked the question, was defense, I mean, was the netting going to be there? I was not insinuating that the fence would or would not be there.
Okay, but the fence is supposed to be there according to the, to variance. He's supposed to put up a fence. He going that put a fence, you approve the variance, that's what you're telling me. Fence is supposed to be there. Defense that would make us feel safe.
The regulations call for a fence, and that's part of what some of these variances are. He's asking for relief.
You say, leave the variances go, and some child wanders in, and he'll leave me. I look in my back, I have six babies, I have blueberry bushes in the back. I can't tell you how many times they see kids back there picking up my blueberry bushes. I know their kids from the neighborhood. And they just wander in, they see some blueberries, I don't stop them, but your children, they don't think. They think, oh, airsoft, they just start to sneak in there with their own C.O.S. guns and try. You gotta know they're gonna do this. You must have children, or grandchildren of your own. So, you're actually saying, it's okay, I don't have to put up a, I'm not saying you're going to, I'm saying this is the pressure. Not to put up the fence permanently, if you allow the variance and say that you believe no child is gonna accidentally sneak on there or on purpose sneak on. So, I have to say, I want you to just think about that before you make the decision. That's all.
I want a little awareness.
Sir, hold on a minute, this is quick. Y'all look like I'm tired, I'm hungry. So, uh, my name is Wayne Markham, uh, thirty-six thirty-two, Cap Cross. Uh, my biggest thing, I'm gonna talk about number five, and I'm just gonna give you some facts, and I'll throw it out there. Y'all do whatever you wanna do with it. But these weapons, they shoot three hundred feet per second to eight hundred feet per second, depending on which one you get, all right? Now, a daisy red Ryder P.D. gun, we all grew up with, shoots three hundred feet per second. Now, you tell me three hundred feet per second cannot kill a squirrel, you got, you're crazy because I've done it, I have done it, all right? Now, forty-five ACP shoots eight hundred and forty feet per second. That's forty feet per second faster than what these airsoft guns are. Now, I'm not gonna say these airsoft guns will kill a lot. No, absolutely not, they probably won't. But what they're gonna do is if you have a little child that go wandering back there, you're gonna put it in the hospital. Yes. All right? That's the facts about the gun. Now, the distance of the guns. They will, can shoot a maximum distance up to a hundred and seventy meters. Now, let me break that down to you to yards. Because everybody knows yards, not many people know meters. I have twenty years of experience in weapons in the military. I have twenty years of experience in weapons in the military, on what they call a weapons profession. A hundred and seventy meters is a hundred and eighty-five point nine yards. Now, you telling me the distance from where they're shooting to the nearest house is less than a hundred and eighty-five point nine yards? I walk around that place, carry a gun, that's smart. So, then bullets, can they break, can they break a small piece of glass in an automobile? Absolutely. Daisy Red Ryder can do it, they shoot three hundred feet per second. All right? That's my facts. I'll do that one, please.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out that he, he, he didn't say a lot of facts.
Wait, wait, wait. If you can't come to the lecture.
Sorry.
Now, is this a rebuttal to what he just said?
Yes, sir, this is.
This is not a rebuttal.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Evans. I live at thirty-four sixty-seven Commerceway. My property directly blocks this proposed, so my biggest concern is given the question of variance being so close to our property lines, and a twenty-foot fence, I think it increases the probability or possibility at least of an increased criminal mischief, possibility of even criminal mischief, given the fact that this thing can shoot three hundred and seventy-five feet, forty-foot net, is not a deterrent. We'd be picking pellets, paintballs, whatever they're going to be shooting. If you pick them out where they are, maybe out of our living room, you'd have it come to the area. That's my biggest concern.
Yes, sir.
Hello, sir. My name is Softsack, this is forty-three thirty-nine. Basically.
Or a brief word to now.
Some would run. Okay, I'll ask you. Basically, what I heard, I'm going to try to keep to who you really want to, all right? Everything I've heard, I know you're saying that you could put property there or something like that, but if you issue a variance, like eight hundred parking spaces, then they would wall out down the road going at eight hundred parking spaces. All right? So, this to me should be a commercial piece of property. That's not for me to say. I know it's not for you to say. But at the next meeting, I will be bringing that up, and that's the first thing that I have to say, and I hope you respect that. It's just that it's a lot, and I think what a lot of people are mad about, even though he's trying his best, keep it out of sight, keep it out of everybody's way, no matter how you look at it, eight hundred parking spaces, eight hundred parking spaces, all right? Coming up Venus Road, Venus High Academy Road, I don't know if any of you folks have been there. It's not a major thoroughfare, you know what I mean? You know, just parking spaces, a lot of people, they're going to be there all day, okay? I know you don't have the power to, you know, talk about anything else, but that's fine. There was one other thing that was brought up here, and I think, ma'am, I think you asked, okay? You asked him about, you know, covenants and stuff like that. Well, there is a covenant. Since the technical covenant agreement started around two thousand seventeen. I don't know what it's about. I would like to find out. I don't know how to do that, but if you'd be kind enough to tell me, I will, I'll find out why. Because if you look at the piece of property, it says the covenant is in effect from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-seven. So, I don't know what that covenant is, but I'd like to.
Whatever the covenant say is beyond the scope of this.
I understand, sir, and that's why I said.
Again, if you want to know what the covenant say, then you need to contact a lawyer or somebody that's in the subdivision, they should have a copy of the covenant.
Okay, well, that's what I was, I was more asking for your help about that, and where I could find that. Obviously, covenants and covenants, I don't know what's for. Normally, it says you can't build on this, you can't do this, you can't do that, and nobody else has put that up. So, that's why I'm asking for your advice.
The Lounds County Coroner's, the D Burke. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I'll see how thirty-four fifty-five Commerceway. I want to just focus mainly on the fence that he is trying to create instead. I don't know how many of the trees close enough to create in the area. My fence is actually a black chain link fence. It's not privacy. I can see completely through to the pond, to the goats, everything around my house. I'm not as worried about going onto that property. I know interestingly more on people's property. I'm more worried about people coming onto mine. There's a lot of fence to separate because I would get, people can easily come into my backyard. My husband has been a pretty good step back in seven months. It's me. Cameras up because just to make sure that there's no way you can watch fifty people and what they're doing at all times. People get there, parking lots there, they want to pull out their weapons. I don't know who these people are. I can see them. So, focus on the variance of the fence. There needs to be something other than trees.
Yes, sir. Will you list, if we can move on?
My name is Jerry Grant, in the forty-five wide right sector. Doing a lot of information to everyone. The one mission is traffic anyway, they have come through there. Venus High Academy Road has a lot of traffic now. Just imagine what's going to happen.
Yes, sir. Aware of it. All in, all done. Ladies and gentlemen, any further discussions, any questions before we try to do something? Can I entertain a motion on this? And I will let whoever makes their motion, whether you're going to do it on all of them together or really you can pass them one at a time.
I make a motion that we deny, Table four oh three twenty-three D, that we deny Chapter four oh seven oh four, that we deny four oh seven oh six, and that their parking spots be at least two hundred.
I have motion on the floor, Ms. Orman.
Second.
I have second, Alvarado. Call in favor, if you raise your hand. We have a vote of four oh. It was denied. All the variance were denied.
No.
I'm sorry. Three of the four were denied. The fourth one was changed to a minimum of two hundred spaces. Okay? Thank you very much for your time. Would you give a few minutes to speed up the room? We still got a couple things.
Yes, sir. We are opposite sides. You what?
Okay, well, ladies and gentlemen, if you have any problems, please raise your hand. If anybody has a problem, please raise your hand. Please, please, a minute. And I have motion to accept that originally, the motion, Mr. Alvarado, second. I have second, if you have a lot of favor, raise your hand, four oh. Thank you very much. Any existing business, the old business, we need to talk. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your intended attention and your time. We are adjourned.